The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good afternoon, and I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to Order at 6:08. If you'll please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has saints, one nation, under God, in the visible, everything, justice, for all.
And before everybody sits down, if we could all just take a moment to recognize former Alderman Tom Garotti, who blessed the city in so many ways with his gifts, his assets, his time, his assets of his gifts that he was able to give to the community, whether it was art or service on the common council and other committees. And before we go to roll call, Alderman Garotti had a few words, so Alderman Garotti, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to read a little something here. My brother Tom would have wanted the city staff, department heads, and the mayor to know how he enjoyed working with each and every one of you on various projects throughout his years. Tom's vision was to make Manassia a better place to visit or live. The Garotti family appreciates all the condolences and prayers that you have sent out on Tom's behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the roll call. Clerk Snyder.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Marshall.
Here.
Alderman Garotti.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Eisenach.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Next is E, which is Public Hearings. Director Schrader, would you be able to give us some background before we open up the public hearings?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, the first public hearing is 1306 Plank Road. This property is currently housing a single-family residential house, but it is Zone C1 General Commercial. They are requesting to rezone this property to R1 Single Family. Basically, that would allow them to subdivide the property and sell the second lot to construct another single-family house. This property is directly across the street from the Heckerod Wetland Conservancy. There are single-family units directly to the west. There's another smaller multifamily building to the west, and then residential to the north. The Plank Commission did review this at their last meeting and did recommend approval of this ordinance, and the staff is also recommending that.
Thank you. Do you want to give context to the second item for the public hearing, and then I'll go through each?
If that's your desire, certainly. So, the second proposal, again, is another rezoning. So, we had saw, we had a request for two of these properties along Fifth Street to be rezoned from C1 General Commercial. When those came through to be rezoned to single-family for financial reasons, again, they were single-family houses and lots on a commercial zoning classification. The Plank Commission noticed that and recommended staff kind of go back to readdress that and to kind of clean those areas up. So with that, we are requesting these properties, there's three properties, two of them to be rezoned to single-family, which is, again, what is currently on the property, and then the last property to be rezoned to R2 Two-Family, again, which is currently on the property. There is a two-family and single-family within this area and would follow the comprehensive plan, and the Plank Commission as well as staff did recommend approval of this.
Thank you. So first, we'll open up the public hearing for ordinance O-1324, an ordinance rezoning 1306 Plank Road. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on the first public hearing item? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Going once, going twice. Seeing none, we'll close the first public hearing, and then I would open it up for the second, which is ordinance 15-24, an ordinance rezoning 710 Fifth Street. Is there anybody in the gallery who wishes to speak on the second public hearing item? Going once, going twice. Seeing none, we'll close the second public hearing item. So next, we'll move on to F, which is Report of Department Officers, Department Heads and Staff and Consultants. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through J and Communications K, L, M, N, and O.
Is there a second?
A second.
So the motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. There's one item, and it pertains to your proclamation. And although we are only receiving these, we're not taking a position, I cannot sit by and allow for a certain sentence, even though we had voted on the same language in the past. I've looked at this a little more closely. It has nothing to do with Facebook, because I don't go on Facebook. I did hear some arguments about it, but there is a part, there's a line in here that says, whereas this indigenous culture has disrupted and destroyed in Manassia, and I don't believe that that had happened. I believe that throughout history, the people of the past and even currently have the highest respect for Native peoples throughout this area, and that we've shown that even currently with a statue that we have in our downtown. We've shown that with a mural that I helped to caulk, to place up on the old city hall. And we've named our community after Native Americans. We've named our rivers, our lakes. If you read stories of how we've worked always well together, and I just think that by saying that we disrupted and destroyed these people in Manassia is not a fair representation to the City of Manassia. And I believe that it's better to work with and be positive and care about. I will obviously vote, you know, to receive this, because I do respect the fact that what it does is it recognizes these individuals, past and present, for October 14, 2021. And I just feel I had to state that. The mayor and I did have conversations about this, and I don't want this to be divisive, because I've heard from three people now, is this true or was that on? Even someone sent me a screenshot of comments that were made. So I want this to reflect being something positive that we feel about the community, and I do believe that is the mayor's intent here.
Thank you, Alderman Sevenik, and most certainly is my intent. Sometimes history is not comfortable, and the goal and intent was to reflect by also acknowledging that there were times of getting along. I don't discredit that in the slightest whatsoever. Did consult other experts with that concern being arisen, so I do appreciate it. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Letter M, under Communications, is a letter from Director Schrader, and I just want to take a moment to thank Director Schrader for his service to the City of Manassia. Much has been accomplished during your tenure here, and wish you the best of luck in your newest endeavors. And also, item O, the 2025 Budget Review Sessions, question for the mayor, when can the common council expect to receive their budget books?
Great question. My plans to have that by the 15th, and I will get that distributed to you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other discussion on any of the items? Alderman Sevenik.
When you say the 15th, you mean at our next meeting, or are they going to be delivered to us, or what?
Well, my goal is to have it done by the 15th, because that is what's outlined, so my intent would be to get that distributed to you all. If there would be some reason that that wouldn't be able to be completely compiled together in the next meeting, is appropriate, or the following days, I would communicate that to you all, but I will have it done by the 15th.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. So next, we'll move on to item G, which is Public Comments on Any Matter of Concern to the City. You have five minutes to speak at the podium. I ask that you say your first and last name and your address. Does anybody wish to speak this evening?
Don Murcus, 163 Main Street. It's kind of weird to be on this side of the microphone, but being this is Director Schrader's last meeting with the City of Manassia, I want to share some of his accomplishments with all of you. Over the past seven years, I've greatly valued our partnership. Where is he hiding back there? I could hear him, but I can't see him. His ability to navigate complex financial plans, secure state funding, and develop a vision for the community, it's been invaluable to us. I also appreciate the open communications we've shared, including his candid advice to pick my battles and to recognize that some dreams should remain just that, dreams. Sam excels in both traditional walkable neighborhood development and suburban growth, understanding what makes each appealing. He is also a skilled manager, keeping his team informed and fostering a positive culture. I'd like to highlight a few of his accomplishments during his tenure. He's closed five TIF districts, generating over $70 million in new tax base that have helped our budgets, launched the Strong Neighborhoods program to reinvest in our historic neighborhoods, secured multiple CDI grants that have some pretty extreme reporting that goes with them, sold the last lots in Lake Park Villas, something in 2008 that I didn't know if would ever happen. That started around 2000. Opened four new subdivisions with hundreds of lots. Signed two new residential projects this year, Sand Hill Landing and Nicolay Redevelopment. Developed five apartment complexes, Bonta, Bryn, Harbor Lofts, Lakeshore Ridge, and Discovery Point. Introduced five coffee shops, Starbucks, Dunkin', Scooters, Caribou, and Blossom. Established two car washes, Tsunami and PDQ. Brought Jimmy John's to a site that many considered was undevelopable. Introduced the first rooftop desk to our, let's do this again, introduced the first rooftop deck to our downtown, and opened Manassia's third quick trip. I'm sure I missed a few more, but taking this chance on a young energetic planner seven years ago has provided great reward for the City of Manassia. Sam's visions and skills have transformed how Manassia is perceived and boosted our community pride. He leaves a big, a set of big shoes to fill. I wish him all the best in his next adventure with the Village of Kimberly, knowing the tremendous impact he has made here in Manassia. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the gallery wish to speak? Anybody wish to speak? And it doesn't look like anybody does. We'll move past item G, Public Comments. We'll move on to H, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the common council minutes of 91624.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella to approve the common council minutes. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I have an amendment to the minutes, and it was presented to you this evening. It is an amendment to number 17, under the items removed from the consent agenda, having to do with the planned unit development for Sugar Maple Development LLC. And the amendment is to add the final condition to the motion, which is condition D, that the developer modifies paragraph 4.2 of the PUD narrative, replacing Sand Hill Lane with Fieldville Drive.
Thank you.
I'll second.
You second that, so the motion was made by Alderman Nichols with the amendment to the language for that, and was seconded by Alderman Sevenik. I almost said Alderman Nichols twice, I apologize. Is there any discussion on it as amended? Otherwise, I think we need to vote on the amendment and then on the minutes as amended. Do you have the whole tape, clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, just wanted to check. If there's no discussion, all those in favor of the amendment, can you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and this would be the common council minutes as amended. Is there any discussion? Yeah, Alderman Sevenik.
If everyone has a copy on their desk.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and this would be the common council minutes as amended. Is there any discussion? Yeah, Alderman Sevenik.
If everyone has a copy on their desk.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the minutes passed as amended. Next, we'll move on to the second item, which is from the Plank Commission, September 10, 2024. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach.
Thank you. The Plank Commission recommends approval of the certified survey map as proposed, consolidating 304 Third Street, parcel number 1-00408-00, and 308 Third Street, parcel number 1-00407-00, with the following condition, that the driveway entrance at parcel 1-00408-00 will be reviewed at the time of any site modification to the parcel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item three, under Plank Commission. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach.
Thank you again. Plank Commission recommends approval of the certified survey map as presented, dividing 1306 Plank Road, parcel 5-00902-00, into two parcels with the following condition. An ordinance amending the rezoning classification of 1306 Plank Road from C1 General Commercial District to R1 Single Family Resident District is approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, what's the difference? Why, it's been like that for probably 60 years or older, or longer. Why does it need to be changed to the R1 Single Family Residence?
Certainly, so what we have with this site, it's a legal nonconforming use, so the single-family dwelling is not permitted by right within the commercial zoning district, and because this is the survey to actually split the property into two, the new, the new property per se, if you were to create that on that vacant site, would not meet the current zoning classifications, minimum lot area, those sort of things, of the C1 classification. In addition, if their intent is to build a second single-family house on that and bring tax base to the city, it would need to be rezoned for them to construct that.
Okay, understood. Yes, there used to be a city employee that lived there, gosh, probably 50 years ago, in that corner house, so. All right, thank you very much, Sam.
Is there any other further discussion? Alderman Repella? Oh, all right. Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to J, which is Action Items, and the first is Accounts Payable. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of September 13 through October 3, 2024, in the amount of $3,373, and 100. There's an extra number in there.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
$3,737, sorry, $3,737,109.79 is the right number.
Thank you. Motion made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Sevenik, and then do we have the correct numbers? Perfect. If we could have a roll call vote, or, I apologize, is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next is item two. It is a carnival permit for the Celebrate Manassia Weekend. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. It was also recommended by staff that we approve the carnival permit application for Celebrate Manassia 150 for October 11, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., and on October 12, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. downtown Manassia. This is around the Curtis Reed Square Main Street area.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Garotti. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next is item three, an application for a Class B retailer's license for Celebrate Manassia Weekend. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve, seeing that all requirements have been met, move to approve the application for a temporary Class B and Class B retailer's license for Dodie Island Development Council at the Celebrate Manassia 150 event, October 11, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., and October 12, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. in downtown Manassia.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next is item five. Is there a motion? Excuse me, item four, is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Go ahead, I'll refer it over to Alderman.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve and accept Heckerod Wetland Reserve's Coneflower Pavilion, solar panels, and boardwalk to be added to the city's mutual municipal property insurance company policy.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Garotti. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenik.
I'd like for the city attorney just to explain the process here and the additional amount that would be applied to our insurance.
Thank you, Alderman Sevenik. Yes, so this procedure came about as we were reviewing the lease agreement with Heckerod Wetland Reserve upon their request for some additional items to be added to the city's municipal property insurance policy. There's a provision in our lease agreement that the city needs to accept the property to be able, for us, to be, to add the property onto our insurance. During this year, the year of the current term, there would be no additional cost for the city to add these items onto the property insurance. However, next year, similar to any other item that the city would add, there is a rate, an equation, that is conducted, and the difference for a 2025 projected premium, and we'll see this later in the Administration Committee as well. The initial renewal quote without these items is $69,178. With these items, should common council choose to accept, $69,479, so a few hundred dollars is the difference.
Thank you. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Somewhat related to property insurance and Heckerod Wetland Reserve, at what point did we, or have we ever accepted the giant new playground that was built?
I can't tell you when that would have been. I know that it is currently on our municipal property insurance.
Okay, as long as it's insured, that's great. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenik. As for the city attorney also, so even though this is Heckerod, and we are insured for probably the equipment, is it also a liability? Because I realize for parks, and this isn't necessarily a park, that we have recreational immunity, so does that apply there, or is this different?
That's a good question, and depending on the incident, it would be a separate analysis, factually specific. However, they do have their own liability coverage. The city covers property insurance.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the last action item, item five. Is there a motion? Well, yeah, actually, we don't need a motion, that's a discussion, so, is there any discussion? Okay.
I'll move forward to ordinance.
All right, there's no discussion on it. We'll move on to ordinances. So the first is Resolution 34-24. Is there a motion? That's okay. Alderman Sevenik.
I'll move for Resolution 34-24. This resolution supports our election officials introduced by the mayor and myself.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and thank you to our election workers and clerks for all the hard work that they do. Next is item two.
Going to do.
Are going to do. Well, they've done work for the past elections and going to do, yes. Thank you very much. Next is item two, ordinance 1324. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach.
Thank you. I move to approve ordinance O-13-24, an ordinance rezoning 1306 Plank Road, parcel number 5-00902-00, from C1 General Commercial District to R1 Single Family Resident District, introduced by myself.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote. Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next is three, ordinance 15-24. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach?
Thank you. I move for the approval of ordinance zero, or O-15-24, an ordinance rezoning 710 Fifth Street, parcel number 4-00028-00, from C1 General Commercial District to R2 Two Family Residential District, and 712 Fifth Street, parcel number 4-00029-00, and 724 Fifth Street, parcel number 4-00032-00, from C1 General Commercial District to R1 Single Family Residential District, introduced by myself.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Lewis. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. And then next is item four, which is Resolution 35-24. Is there a motion? Alderman Garotti?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of R3524, a resolution authorizing the application of grant funding for the Urban Forestry Grant, providing residency in the Manassha Urban Forestry, introduced by myself.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Garotti, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to O, which is Public Comments on Any Matter Listed on This Agenda, for five minutes. Is there anybody in the gallery that wishes to speak on anything on this agenda? Going once, going twice, doesn't look like anybody wants to speak, so we'll move on to item P, Items for the Next Meeting Agenda by a majority vote. Is there anything anyone wishes to have on the next agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Motion made by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Lewis. All those in favor? Those opposed, we adjourned at 6:40. Thank you all.
The city of Manassha is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manassha.wi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding city of Manassha issues, or about these broadcasts, can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.